Mr. Parno said he were gonna have public comments tonight, so he confused me when I was outside.
My apologies, Mayor.
Moving on to...
He set you up pretty good on that.
Moving on discussion items. 16-423, the Public Works Operations Center update, Mr. Lewis.
One of my many favorite projects, we just want to give you a little update on, and I think we're working on that. Is that coming together over there, Katie? So we'll need the screen, and Martin's gonna come up. Martin Montalvo, our operations manager is here. So a big round of applause for Martin as he comes to the front of the room. Thank you, Martin. So...
He gets paid, I don't.
Oh, that's true. Let's see. The... You know what? Martin, do you mind if I...
Yeah.
It's gonna be on the screen, is it not? Just 'cause Jesse and Karen won't be able to see through that. So our... What we'd like to do is just give you a short update on the operations plan, some of our public involvement process, and the plan as it's changed over the years from what we started with to where we're at now. So with that, I'm gonna introduce Martin. And David, you wanna come up here too? David Hyman with DECA is our architect. So he's been with us on the master plan since... He's been working on this longer than I've been here, so it's 12 or 13 years now, I think.
That'll last most of you.
But he's been working on this project. So with that, Martin?
Good evening. Martin Montalvo, operations manager, Oregon City Public Works. So just a brief update on the Ops Center. Last year, city commission tasked us to reach out with the community and try and resolve some of the issues that have been expressed to us regarding the design of the operation center utilizing the existing site. So about a year ago, we started having conversations with a small focus group of some of the members of the McLaughlin neighborhood, talking to them, saying, "Hey, what are some of the major concerns for the community? And where are there some allowances that can be made on the design? And our functional needs so that this is a better fit for the community." So with that, they outlined a few things for us with pedestrian access, the usage of vehicles in the upper yard, heavy equipment traffic, and then also trying to utilize as many of our sites for our needs, not just this site. So with that, we started meeting with a couple of the neighborhood associations. We've had two meetings with the McLaughlin neighborhood. We also had a couple of meetings with several of the other neighborhood associations. And then we also had recent open house, a pancake breakfast at Public Works. And all of these instances, collecting feedback and comments from the community and saying, "Hey, this is the plan from 2009. And we thought then it was a good plan, but we realize there's concessions that can be made. What do you guys want to see?" So based on the comments that we started seeing... Could we go to the next slide? Or do I have it?
I think I have it.
That looks like white to me.
Going with the snow field is the plan. White. Eric.
We're gonna have to start having...
David's all here. You just have to scroll down. It's a PDF, so I just...
Yeah, it shouldn't work. Can I get your USB drive again? I'm sorry, it must not have copied correctly.
Or is...
I apologize for this.
So we have the bubble diagram, which you guys have seen previously.
There you go.
And the bubble diagram was a result of the meetings with the neighborhoods and with a few members of the working group that we'd had. Several of the concessions that we worked with on with the community is saving the rock outcropping. So on the very northern peninsula of that property, trying to minimize the impacts to the properties just below that, recognizing there's some resources there that we didn't want to impact. Trying to keep our vehicles as much as possible into the lower yard. Trying to minimize the height of facilities so that we're not this imposing figure. And then trying to push as much as we can out of the line of sight so that the neighbors aren't impacted with visual and sound clutter. This bubble diagram kinda was a tool that we used that helped David and his team help us with trying to cite out what our eventual needs are. We had a couple of work sessions internally with our staff, saying, "What are our long-term needs for the 20-year and beyond?" So with that, we started laying out some concept plans. And we're gonna share that with you this evening. David will go through it with a little bit more detail than I will. It's not a definitive plan, but it kind of allocates where everything needs to be for us to be able to use this as a functional facility. We also are accounting for utilizing our Mountain View property and a couple of our other properties for some of our needs. One of the hot topics as of late is the existing armory. So this plan does call for the armory being acquired. City has deeded rights to the armory under the existing deed. We've been working cooperatively with the armory and the State Department of Military to try and get an appraisal and bring something to you in the near future for acquisition. With that, if we can go to the next page, and I'll let David go into a little bit more detail. I think you're gonna have to help me, this isn't working. I think the files are too big, is what it is. So I'll let David go into a little bit more detail as to how we got to this iteration. I will tell you, the overall square footage of this site is significantly less than what you saw in the 2009 plan set. We have been able to make concessions in terms of needs and sizes, and also still account for all of our needs for the long term.
Thanks, Martin. The big move was... Can you see it when I put a pointer up there? Or you're just looking at it on your screen?
It's fine.
Okay, now... The big move, of course, was moving the office building, which was nestled in the corner over here. And it was a four-story building at the time, and there was some objection to just the size and the scale of that building. But it was also designed to accommodate a lot more offices. It was designed to accommodate the full Public Works department. And now we've kinda scaled that back to just operations. So, you know, some of the things we heard was it had to do with truck traffic through the neighborhood, coming up South John Adams from this direction. So the big strategy move in terms of that was moving all of the large truck parking down to the lower level and moving the office up above, flipping the office essentially from that lower level up to the upper level. So, excuse me, the vehicles that are on the upper level are primarily small and medium-sized trucks. And the large things like the VACON and large dump trucks would be on this lower level. So that would significantly minimize the amount of large truck traffic through the neighborhood and up into the site.
One thing I will add on that. All of those heavy pieces of equipment are already stored in that lower area already. So it is no net change in terms of, well, now you've just moved the problem to the lower from the upper. All of those assets are already located in that lower area.
So the office building went from about 25,000 square feet in a four-story building on the lower level to now it's about 14,000 square feet on the upper level. So almost half the size, essentially. But it still serves the needs for not only the present, but future needs of the operations department.
That's still four stories upstairs?
No, it's only two stories on the upper level, yeah.
So let me ask you this question. Could we build it? Two stories, designed in such a way that we could add a third story as an expansion, you know, down the road?
You could certainly do that, yeah. That would be one strategy. Another strategy would be to allow some room on one side or the other to expand out, which is a little bit less expensive than building up on an existing structure. So, yeah, I think if that was the... If that was the goal, that would certainly be something we could take a look at.
I mean, I just don't want to be party to building something that's only good for 20 years.
Right.
One thing I'll point out for you, Mayor. Here in the bottom center, you'll see future expansion, 10,000 square feet. This plan takes into consideration phasing. There's no way we can build this and sustain our normal operations on a daily basis without phasing it. That, right now, is slated for a storage facility. But it's not something that we intend to construct with the initial phases. It's something that we'll be looking at down the road. That gives us 10,000 flat square feet. We could do something...
So you could do an upper area with offices and have your stores down below, yeah?
Absolutely. And almost all these designs, David did mention this, allow for mezzanine storage.
Okay.
So for our storage needs, we can put stuff on top of stuff.
The other change was we were building a fleet shop in this general location before in the 2009 plan. And with the acquisition of the armory, the thought was, let's... You know, it's a great building. It's solid, it's concrete, it's very adaptable. It may need a roof, but the bones are good. That could be the fleet shop, and that would actually save quite a bit of money. And it could be the fleet shop, the welding shop, and the sign shop, right? And, yeah. So that would take place in here, and that's about 13,800 square feet of space.
And that's the place where you make the most noise, probably.
Right.
And it looks to me like that's about as far away from any neighborhood structure as you can get.
Yep, absolutely. The other couple of things we did was we had bin storage up here on this, on the north side of the site, up against, that's kind of a bluff, there's a bluff right there, too. And so there were some comments from the neighbors about the noise of trucks backing up and, you know, some vibration that could loosen rocks occasionally. So we pulled all of that bin storage here and on the lower level and on some other sites as well. So that's kind of freed up that issue. So those are really the big issues. The rest is tool storage. There are covered parking areas for the trucks, for the small, medium, and large trucks. Some indoor, the ones that need frostproofing would be indoor space, some would just be covered space. So it really serves, you know, all of the needs, I think, that we anticipate for the next, you know, 30, 40, 50 years.
So for the tool storage, one thing I'll add, we visited several other facilities and saw some of their business practices. And we went to Tigard, and they've got a really innovative approach they took with their new Public Works facility. And they went vertical as much as possible. So this is a two-and-a-half-story building that'll be up in that upper yard, out of the line of sight. And as much as possible with the storage, we intend to go into a rack system, similar to what you would see in a Home Depot, where the racks are basically bolt anchored into, you know, the foundation. And then we'll have cherry pickers that the guys can utilize. And the thing that I really like about this plan is the bays for the guys are intended to be drive-through. So if it's a pouring rain event, snow, whatever, they can come in here, safely load, unload what they need to deal with their daily activities, and then route right out of the site. We've got two points of entry, one on John Adams either end. The intent is for the majority of our daily traffic to be coming in off of the Center Street entryway. But we will still utilize the gate access point on John Adams on a limited basis. Most of our vehicles are all going to be on the lower area at the newly reconstructed four-way stop. So for the neighborhood with the speeding concerns, we'll have a truly configured four-way, which may or may not help. And then I'll let David show you some of the ideas that we're thinking for the facade of the Center Street campus.
And I'll just point out one, add to one thing that Martin said is, with the drive-through in the storage building and also down here on these covered truck parking, that means trucks can move through the site in a forward motion without having to back up, which reduces, significantly reduces, the amount of beeping. There still will be some backing in some of these where the grade of the street doesn't allow that drive-through. But for the most part, it significantly reduces that backing up.
Oh, so these are all gonna have garage doors on Center Street?
Yes.
Not all of them, but several of them will. If you see an arrow depicted in front of it, the intent is to have a garage door that allows access onto Center Street?
Well, you see the arrows going on both sides of the building, that means it's a drive-through. Just this area from here to here, just because of the grade of the street, we can't connect to the street from the site.
Right.
So, but we could also, you know, I mean, we haven't gotten into the architectural expression of it, but we can also, you know, maintain that rhythm, that look along the entire facade. Okay, so can you go to the next slide?
You didn't mention the cargo elevator and the entrance...
Oh, yeah, so there's... Sorry, yeah. So we do, we have provided stairs. There's a set of stairs right here which connects the public to Waterboard Park. And there's also a set of stairs that connects the upper level for staff. But then, you know, it's about a 40-foot incline or about a 40-foot drop. So we are proposing an elevator, which was housed in the building before. In the 2009 scheme, it was housed in that four-story building. Here it would be a freestanding one. But of course, the scale of it is much smaller than what of that building in the previous iteration.
Is that required for ADA?
It's not required. I think you could get by without it, but we just think in terms of just, you know, coordination and ease of use and, you know, productivity, I would think that it would be a good idea.
We will have some deliveries. So all our deliveries right now, we're intending to have them be made in the lower area. And we'll figure out a delivery plan, how to finalize that. We've talked about some concepts. But there will be some assets that we dropped off at the bottom that will need to be brought up.
Sure.
And it's intended that will function, to some extent, to bring some of those things up and down without having to wheel a truck all the way around just to bring something up to the upper yard.
We've maintained access on the east side to Waterboard Park also. Left a few parking spaces for that, and this entry into Waterboard Park will be maintained, just as it is now. And there'll, of course, be a gate at both ends of the site, so there won't be necessarily the drive-through traffic that's there now.
What about a fence? Is there a fence around the entire perimeter?
Yes, and that's...
We have some renderings of what that potentially could look like.
Yeah.
Okay.
It will not be chain-linked, it will not be cyclone. It will be some sort of architecturally appropriate fence that fits the neighborhood.
But obviously, we need to do our best to keep people out of the facility.
It's a working construction yard to a large extent. So we do want to keep it as safe as possible and still have it inviting to the neighborhood so there don't feel like we just plop down a penitentiary in the middle of it. So it won't be cyclone or bob wire or anything like that. No concertina wire.
So I think it maintains great circulation on the side. Still, you know, maintains the number of structures and square footage and storage and machine shops and all of those things that we had before. This is a sort of a testing out of the floor plan of the office building, just to kind of show you the components. It has ways to go, we haven't gotten into it in too great a detail. But this would be the ground floor right here. This would be an entry with a lobby and reception area, proposing a small conference room on the ground floor and a larger conference room, up to 60 people, subdividable into two, on the upper floor. This is the break room. The lockers are over here, men and women's lockers are over here. Staff offices on this wing, copy room and so forth. And then on the upper level, additional offices, kind of the, almost like studios for the divisions, for the various divisions, where there's a lead and a superintendent on each one and staff outside of that. Yeah. Archive storage, variety of different things that were part of the program that we determined in the facilities need study that we did.
Scale-wise, to let you kind of visualize it, the conference room you see on the second floor suited for about 60 people, which is a little bit larger space than what you have here in City Hall. Currently, we don't have anything big enough for all of Public Works, for all of our divisions to communally meet, to have, you know, meetings or a large training session, so that suits those needs. The break room, which if you've seen our break room at Ops, is a little bit over twice the size of our existing break room, which is grossly needed. The locker room, if you've seen our locker room in the men's room, it's grossly inadequate. So this is three times the size of our locker room, and really just kind of meets the standard for what a locker room for the size of our staff should be at. And of course, if you've seen the ladies locker room, you'll know that this is a severe improvement.
Any questions about the office? Okay. It was just a way of kind of testing out the size of it, make sure that we had generous spaces. There's some work to go on this.
And then for future expansion, there's spaces in here that are allocated for guest workers. And it allows us to kind of build out a little bit more with adding some extra spaces that were guest worker now to dedicated staffing. If we start building up any of the divisions in Public Works, we start situating people over at Ops.
So this is the armory building and how we might use that. There's an existing bay, high bay, right in here with big roll-up doors on both ends. There's an existing wall right here, this is a kind of a lower-ceilinged portion. And this is an existing wall right here in a lower-ceiling portion over here. So the trucks, the vehicle, the fleet shop essentially would be in this center portion, could accommodate a lot more trucks than what they're accommodating right now in their current fleet shop. But it would also accommodate the machine shop, the welding shop, the sign shop, some decoration storage, an office, restrooms, and then some additional parts, tool storage for tires and vehicle parts, things like that.
So the truck that Dave's got depicted here is, to scale-wise, about the size of one of our small VACON right now. So if you've seen that, it gives you kind of a little bit of an eyeball size. You can see we'll be adequately be able to fit four people or four trucks in here simultaneously, be able to service them. And then still have other room for vehicles to move in, out, and storage for additional needs. So if something gets red-tagged for a prolonged period of time, we can push it all the way to the back of the shop, and it won't affect our operations. We currently can't do that with our existing shop space.
That thing's huge.
It's big, yeah.
And it's not anything we gotta build.
I was gonna say, and it's already there. That's a big, that's a big deal.
Needs a roof, and it needs some work on the interior. But the bones and the eight-inch concrete slab that it all sits on is worth every dollar.
And it's going from industrial use to industrial use. It's not a change of use from a code standpoint, so that triggered, which triggers a lot of things like seismic upgrades. So it's kind of made to fit.
And one of the things we've talked about this, and I'll put it out there, is that we realize there's nostalgic attachment to the armory within the community. We've always recognized that. If there's something that we can incorporate in this that still honors our veterans and anyone that's, as a veteran, you know, as someone who's served, we'll try and incorporate that into the design or something within the building that says, you know, this was the historic use of this facility.
Let me ask just one question. So the exterior walls of that, is that reinforced CMU block, or is that...
It's a mixture, but it's predominantly poured-in-place concrete. There is some CMU, some concrete block as well.
So there aren't any seismic issues, or...
Well, we don't know, we haven't had a structural engineer take a look at it. But just intuitively, if you're keeping like use, you know, you're going from industrial to industrial, that typically doesn't trigger seismic upgrades. There may be some, you know, little infills. You know, we're probably gonna be doing, wanting to cut some openings in that concrete wall along the sides just for ease of access into those large shop spaces. That may trigger some reinforcing along those walls and things like that. We haven't really taken a look at the structural implications of that. But the fact that it has two-long, you know, solid walls, concrete and exterior, mostly on the exterior, it's a very solid shell. You know, the things that, you know, if you did have to do a seismic upgrade, it would usually involve tie-downs of the roof to the structure and to the foundation, those kinds of things. And, you know, there may be some of that from roof to wall, we just haven't had a chance to take a look at that yet.
All right, thanks, sir.
What's the ceiling height in there?
In the... I don't know exactly, but it's probably at the peak. It's a gable.
So the false ceiling, it's probably 14 to 15 feet?
Yeah.
And then above that, we don't know, we haven't gotten up there yet.
Well, I'm just curious whether you could use storage above these offices and stuff.
There's a low roof over the shop spaces and the storage spaces, so there's not that much vertical capability?
No.
If you were to do a mezzanine, you know, you could probably do it in this center section, you know, a small portion of it.
Okay.
Okay.
And then we've got one more slide we'd like to share with you, just with some of the exteriors that we were... And again, this is all just ideas right now, we're not locked into anything. We intend to meet with the neighborhoods and the community, again, to share, hey, we kind of sized it out, and we know what we think we can do with it. We've listened to what you guys were talking about and how things should be laid out, and what do you guys think about how the exterior should look? So we talked about all these bay doors that allow for truck-efficient cycling. These are some of the things that we were thinking of that are representative. I personally like the one on the top left. Our wallet book tells us we're probably end up with something that's a little bit more like the top right. But we'll come up with something that meets the character of the neighborhood, and we'll bring it to you guys, as well as any of the interested neighborhoods and our planning process.
Yeah, I really don't like the one in the center-right top. You know, I don't think it needs to look like a fire station. Not to mention that, you know, the less glass we have there, the less, you know, vandalism issues we have.
So with that, I don't think we have any other comments. If you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer any of your questions.
Renato, you got anything?
I did have a question. I was wondering if we had done a baseline traffic count on John Adams just to find out where things are now so that we can measure the impact after this development. I know that's been a big concern for the neighbors.
So a baseline traffic count was conducted in the 2009 analysis. We've not rehashed that. We feel that those numbers are still pretty relevant. Nothing in that upper yard, in terms of our usage or the community usage, has really significantly changed. If it's something that the commission feels that we need to look at again and commission another traffic analysis, our intent was simply to rely on the numbers from the '09 analysis.
Thank you.
So one last question. So up there, as you come off of John Adams, you come in and you turn right past the armory. There's a long, low wooden building there that used to be, I don't know, it's had a lot of historical uses.
The cannery?
Yes. Is that a structure that can be saved and moved somewhere else, or is it too fragile to...
Structurally, that building is compromised. As just for usages, for what we do, we try and minimize its use to the maximum extent possible. If you've been up there when we did the tour, that was one of the reasons we wanted everyone to come and take a look. From the historic review that we did in the '09 plan, none of the buildings were deemed historically significant by SHIP-O. They did ask, and we agreed within the master plan, that as much as possible, we will try and salvage any of the materials for possible reuse, either privately or by the city. But that building, I think it's...
Too foregone.
It's given up the ghost.
Okay, thank you. Any else?
That has a wood floor, doesn't it?
No.
I thought I saw there was a whole...
It has no floor, right?
The big building has a wood floor that's floating on a floating...
Literally floating.
Yeah, literally floating. There's actually a culvert underneath it. But the cannery actually has a very thin masonry floor. And then we have two inset cuts with rock, just to allow for drainage in there because the roof is so bad that we get water in there, and we need to have a means to get the water out.
Anything else?
One other thing I wanted to say, so we talked about long-range plan, longer than 20 years. So we think that this site accommodates that long-range need.
How long?
Especially, well, we talked 50 years, right? That's what we talked about before. I think, you know, the building's gonna be built to last much longer than that.
Yeah.
You know, I see the Mountain View site, we have a facility plan for the Mountain View site as well. We, you know, as we move along through the further development of the city, there's probably opportunities there. And so I think for our use, that's always gonna be our core location for our staff. You know, bin storage, those kind of things, where we store some of our seasonal equipment. You know, that can change over time. But the site, as is with the armory building, and by the way, the armory building has always been in the plan. So it's not a new idea, it's always been part of the plan. It was just part of the growth plan, and it was definitely gonna help with our phasing, right? So in the original 2009 plan, a lot of our challenge was to have to build a building down on a site that, on the lower side, which we use a lot. So the armory building was gonna help bridge that, and it's still gonna help bridge that. We're gonna be able to move the fleet and maybe even some of our offices up into that area while we're kind of reconfiguring. So 50-year plan, army, was always, has always been part of the plan. And then we didn't talk much about the end, the access off of Center Street. But as you know, we acquired the piece of property at 306 South Center Street. And it's our intent to reconfigure that roadway such that the ingress and egress on that end of the site is improved as well.
Okay.
What is the estimated window for implementing this strategy? Is it over the next five years? Is it over the next two years? What are the thoughts on that?
Well, so we have a couple of hurdles to get over. The, we understand from the planning department that we need to take the master plan back and make some revisions to that and get that through the land use process. So, you know, that's somewhere between six to 12 months, right, Laura? So we're on that kind of a timeframe. But, you know, acquisition of the armory, making some of those adjustments up there, that, to me, seems like could happen on a much shorter timeline. But I really think full implementation of the two-story building, reconfiguration and demo of the lower lot, that can't happen until we get the land use approval.
The acquisition of the arm...
It might be three or four years before anything, before it's significantly different.
No, no, no. I would say more like, you know, it'd be nice to have a design going while we're working on the land use approval. And, yeah, we would be more in that 18-month... we're working on the land use approval, and yeah, we would be more in that 18 months to two years.
So the first phase is acquisition of the armory and then renovation of the armory, just to meet some of our immediate needs with some of our storage facilities. So that, there's no land use decision required with that, because we're not gonna be altering the use of it significantly. We intend to start making some of those improvements once we finalize any sort of agreements that are necessary for the acquisition of the armory. Those of you that have seen our storage buildings, those are difficult to work with just as it is. So that building will help bridge just some of our immediate needs.
So speaking as far as the armory, I think that's a process that once the Oregon Military Department actually engages, is still gonna take four to six months probably to go through that process. I spoke with a major down there last week just to get an idea, because there's been some stuff out there floating in the community about, you know, how someone's trying to take away the programming that's in the armory and that this is a surprise to everybody. And the fact is, is that, you know, we've been working on this since way before 2009. And the other thing is, is the armory is, if the Oregon Military Department is going to get rid of the armory, gonna surplus it out, the city of Oregon City has the first right of refusal on that. So it couldn't go to a private, into private hands anyway. So I just wanted to make it clear to the community that this is not something new. This has been around for a long time. We never intended to demolish the armory. We intend to keep it there and honor its history.
And speaking with the Oregon Department of Military, you know, their funding is limited. The amount of resources that they can dedicate to properly maintain that building is restricted with all of their other needs. And we think we can be a better steward for that facility and still utilize it as an asset for the community if we utilize it for part of our public works process.
So was that building ever named?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Maybe that's one of the questions you guys could ask the Oregon Military Department, because I mean, if it was, you know, many of the armories were named after a fallen soldier. If it ever had a name like that, then maybe that signage could be part of the incorporation, you know, into the historic use of the building.
That's a great suggestion. Any other questions?
No. Thanks, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. Next up, the ever-citrillating Wyatt Parno and the 16-421 bonds for the new police facility. So Chief Band and Mr. Parno.
Carol, you can come up and have a seat here while I get started. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. Excited to talk about next steps. There's been a lot of talk in the community for quite a while about our police facility and the utility fee as well. And tonight, we're gonna talk about next steps. We're gonna start with, Carol Samuels is the managing director with Public Finance, if I got that right, with Piper Jeffrey. She also presented to the commission about the library project.
Hi.
So she's gonna give kind of a bond 101 presentation to you, and then after that, I'm gonna kind of talk about where we're at with numbers and some of the things that have been taking place as we're looking at the project over the last year, and then we'll look to get some direction from you.
Go ahead, Carol.
It's my show.
State your name for the record, please.
My name is Carol Samuels. I am a managing director at Piper Jeffrey, and I'm pleased to be here again. So nice to see several familiar faces. What Jim and Wyatt suggested we start with were the basics of bonds. I know several of you have been through bond issues before, but I always like to assume you know nothing. So we're gonna start with some definitions. If that's too remedial and you want me to move along more quickly, feel free to use hand motions. On the other hand...
Actually, I appreciated you forwarding that information to us already about bonds 101, because I, for one, had to kind of revisit that and stuff, so I appreciate you doing that. So I'm kind of involved with it already.
So, Renata, are you comfortable skipping the bonds 101 piece?
Absolutely.
Okay, then I think the rest of us are. We've all been.
Excellent. Well, then, I think the best page to flip through is, let's start here. So this is a snapshot of historical interest rates over the last...
Can I do, I wanna make sure that if, I don't know, Commissioner Mengelberg, are you watching at home, or we might, I just wanna make sure she knows what visual we're on, if she's not at a place where she can see?
Unfortunately, I can't see, but I do have the PowerPoint that was emailed out beforehand in front of me.
So we're on page eight.
Page eight. Okay, thank you.
Okay, sorry.
No worries. So, as you can see, we are looking at a graph with a definite downward slope. This is a picture of interest rates, both in the treasury market and in the municipal market since 1996. And the inescapable conclusion is, now is a screaming good time to borrow. Long-term interest rates have never, I mean, never in history been lower than where they've been in the last couple of weeks. A lot of that has to do with international turmoil, but even without recent moves downward, it's hard to say that now isn't a really good time to be borrowing money. That's good if you're borrowing right now. The difficulty for your situation is that you're thinking of going on the November ballot, which realistically means it's going to be almost a year before you borrow. So we've tried to be conservative in our numerical estimates. We've added a pretty sizable cushion to these varying interest rates, but it's also possible that interest rates will stay the same, in which case the results will be better, or they may be higher, in which case the results could be worse. So with that as a general commentary, let's look at some specific information, and I am now flipping to slide nine. What Jim and Wyatt asked us to do was to start with the variable of how much money you expected to have available each year to pay debt. And the estimate is roughly $1.1 million. And then calculate, based on interest rates with a cushion, how much you could borrow with that annual revenue flow. For a 15-year issue, you could borrow about $12.6 million. If that's insufficient, based upon recent estimates, a 20-year issue will get you $16.3. Interest expense is shown in the line below. Obviously, just like with a 30-year versus 15-year mortgage, anytime you borrow over a longer period of time, you're going to pay more in interest. On the other hand, if you look at the true interest cost at the bottom of the page, which is the municipal market's version of the internal rate of return or the annual percentage rate, lots of different names for it, the differential between a 15-year rate and a 20-year rate right now is not very significant. It is not at all unusual, particularly for a facility that is going to have a useful life of long beyond 20 years, to do a 20-year borrowing. So that is definitely an option you could consider. Moving now to slide 10, in terms of the timing, the assumption here is that you will go for a general obligation bond, even though the expectation is you will use the fee to pay debt service. Why? Because the interest rates you receive on a general obligation bond, one that is secured theoretically by a property tax levy, is substantially lower. So that means that the likelihood that your fee will cover the costs goes up if you go for a general obligation bond. And since the city is required to seek voter approval for any kind of debt issue, it seems to us that it is prudent to ask for permission to borrow on the cheapest basis.
Sure.
So, the timing of a November election is November 8. You would have to prepare a ballot title that would be subject to your approval and submit it to the county by September 8. And obviously, Election Day is November 8, but we are a mail-in ballot state, so ballots are expected to hit the mailbox October 21. So to the extent you are organizing any kind of campaign, you wanna focus on the timing in which your citizens will have the ballots in front of them.
The campaign pack is aware of all the deadlines.
That's good to hear. Okay, so, that's all I had, and I'm available for any questions you might have.
So I'm gonna take the obvious one. Mr. Parno, during, and Mr. Band, during all this time, we've been talking about a 15-year bond issue.
Sure.
So how are we fixing that in this, because you have a sort of a fix in there for this, right?
You bet we do. So I will, here's kind of the, and this might get us to kind of understand where we're at. So a couple of things, just looking, going back at inception here. What the original plan with this utility fee was, the communication out to the public originally was, look, utility fee, the plan, the whole time, was we would collect on the fee two, two and a half years, then potentially go out for a bond. The fee was designed so that if we went for a bond, it would be a 15-year bond. And so two places that the cost of the project would be covered, the sale of the building that we're in right now, and what the assumption we're operating under, that's an educated assumption, is about $2.5 million. The rest of the money would come from the utility fee. Now, if you take the building out of it and go just to the fee, the fee, remember, was, we're gonna collect for a couple of years, use that money, plus what we would do with the bond. Now, at the time, so just put that in the back of your mind for a second. Some of the fluid things about moving forward and getting to a place where we're actually committing pen to paper with numbers. We had some additional costing done from the original time that McKenzie cost this whole project for us. Fast forward, I think we've gotta be close to two years now. They don't tell you your project's gonna cost exactly this. They gave a window that said it's gonna be somewhere with hard, soft costs, everything all in, somewhere between here and here. We took kind of the middle and a little bit below the middle and said, let's just settle on $18 million. So we recently had them do some work, updating some street improvements and some other SDC stuff. And when they sent back the updated cost, they also said, oh, by the way, the cost of building, a building right now is a lot more expensive than it was two years ago. That average construction now, your $18 million is now 20. So that, the building cost is a little, a little fluid. Well, it's a lot fluid for a couple of reasons. The other thing in this costing is, we said, here's a site, give us an idea what this would cost, which they did. We have a concept design. We have a picture of what an outside of a building could look like. We don't, we have not engaged the public at all. So part of our plan, as we're trying to figure out what cost would be, is very presumptuous, because our plan is to go to the public. We've got about a year of public engagement planned, a meeting with every neighborhood, open houses, meeting at the site, and saying to the public, all right, we're building a project. What's your feedback? What's important to you? So that would have a lot to do with the costing of the project. We think it's still gonna be somewhere in this $18 to $20 million range. So that's fluid. Fee collection to date, we had planned on waiting a little bit longer to go for the bond. We had a lot of people saying, because of bond rates, maybe you guys should go a little bit sooner. We pushed the fee back six months to kind of soften the blow to the community, which was good for, great for the community in terms of, if you just look at the project, that's a half million dollars in revenue. So that's a little bit fluid. And then the other piece is, if you think, at the end of the day, what we need is, we're gonna need at some point, we're gonna have a number, whether it's 18 million, whether it's $20 million. And we're gonna need to give somebody that money to pay for our project. We are not gonna be able to sell our building until we are moved into, it would make no sense to sell it, move into another place, rent it. So we're not gonna have access to that, whatever that building is worth, until after this project is done. So bond, if that happens, the project starts, it's gonna take probably a year to construct it. We're gonna move in. We're gonna put the building for sale. We're looking at more time before we have access to what we sell our property for.
Then again, the property's gonna go up in value at the same time.
Yes, especially if that court project goes, courthouse. Anyway, we can dream. But, but at the end of the day, if, when we're problem-solving this, we need 18 to whatever, $20 million, whatever number we're gonna land on. So how do we get there? And if you look at the numbers that she gave us, based on, if you go straight 15-year, I think that's 12 and a half, somewhere, it would land at 12 and a half to 13 million.
I'm gonna stop you here and let Wyatt do the numbers.
Well, just, I'm almost, just let me, let me just finish this, because I think it's where you need to be. So what, at the end of the day, what we looked at is, if we did a 20-year, if we said, okay, 20 years gives us access to the full bucket of money that we need, Carol, if we do that, and then in a couple of years, when we sell our project, when we sell our building, can we pay this off early? So, yeah, it's a 20-year bond, but can we pay it off early and still shoot for our 15 years? And she said, yes. Now there's, it's a little, you know, it's not like your mortgage that you just pay it off whenever you want to, but after 10 years, you're able to do that. So that is why we're looking at 20 as an option instead of 15. And at that, I'll hand over to Wyatt.
Thank you. So Mayor and Commissioner, Jim very well explained. Thank you very much. So let me assure the commission that what we're doing is good management of the city's resources, okay? And traditionally, in the bond market, we have what is an early call provision, which means you can pay off the bonds early. And Carol can speak to this, but basically, it's typically, we can ask for, after 10 years, can we make early payments, okay? The reason it's smart for us to do a 20-year bond is a couple of things, but primarily is to protect the taxpayer. One thing that the commission's committed, we do not want to increase the CSafe rate. We committed to that $6.50.
Fifty.
Fifty cents. The other thing, we don't want to have a geo-tax levy. So it's prudent for us to go out for a 20-year bond, to guarantee that as some of these variables come into play and we get from pre-designed to design, we nail things down, hopefully our property will sell at a higher dollar value than what we want, we get the money, and then we're gonna pay it off early if we can. But primarily, what we wanna do is make sure that we insulate the taxpayers, so we're not changing any of those fees. And Carol can speak to that, but we did the same thing with the library. So we have a 20-year issuance on the library, and we do have a 10-year call, I think, on that. So at any time, we can pay it off early, and that's our intent to do so if we can. But it's smart for us to not tie ourselves down to a 15-year bond and then struggle with the money and then be in a position where we're asking the taxpayers to do something different. I think this is the cleanest way to go, is with a 20-year bond.
Okay. Renata, questions?
Yes, how big is the building that you're contemplating?
40,000 square feet. And just, and that includes court, which is a different floor. And basically, everything that's up in our building now.
And space.
And this bond would cover furniture and A&E and everything. There's no additional costs involved.
Correct.
And the other thing that we need to be aware of too, is that, as Jim talked about, we're gonna be working through this public process. There is some opportunity to scale the project a little bit. So, you know, once we get our bond funding, we're gonna be working within established parameters for sure. But it is a full-cost estimate.
Questions? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So just really quick, next steps, we're gonna be coming back to you in a few weeks to a commission meeting with a resolution to put a bond measure...
Right, which you have to do
November.
Before September 8.
So we've been in touch with our bond counsel, which are the attorneys that draft the ballot title, and we'll be... the ballot title, and we'll be asking the Commission for approval of a resolution to move forward with that at the next Commission meeting or the one shortly thereafter.
Okay. So, I am gonna have to leave around 7:00. So, if you guys don't mind, I'd like to flip 3C and 3D, I'd like to hear the waterfront master plan stuff.
Okay.
Is that okay? Sorry, Laura.
No problem.
So, we're now at 16-418, Waterfront Master Plan, Riverfront Clackamas Park Master Plan. This would be interim Community Services Director Denise Conrad.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. We're bringing this back to you for discussion for, excuse me, Riverfront Clackamas Park Master Plan. You asked for three items to be discussed again at this work session. Those items would be the parking lot adjacent to McDonald's, the RV park, and the boat ramp circulation. So, with those three items, you also asked for the waterfront master plan. I included the waterfront master plan in your packet, as well as the 60% construction drawings for the improvement of the RV park, and the 30% plus the hydrology memo from our consultant. The 30% is the ramp itself's location. It does provide two options for circulation patterns. The parking lot adjacent to McDonald's, per the waterfront master plan, which is from 2002, is, the property is owned by Urban Renewal. The master plan calls for that to be an accommodation for overflow parking, for boating activities or basic general park overflow, or larger park gatherings could be special events. It also asks for design of the vehicles, for vehicles with trailers, and to accommodate boating and fishing, for the boating and fishing seasons, and cars during other times. The RV park in the waterfront master plan is called out for removal and a restoration for general park use, wildlife habitat, and picnicking. The RV park and the area to the south, they're calling out for improvements for general revenue creation, which would be general park uses, group picnics, weddings, special event venues, and they are asking for a limited parking and trails area, and additional boat-trailer parking. The RV dump station was called out for relocation. Whether that's a feasible option now, it's kind of up in the air in terms of whether or not we retain the RV park. The boat ramp is not specifically called out in the master plan. They are, in the waterfront master plan, calling out a general emphasis on accommodating boaters and fishermen. And that is more for easing the congestion of the parking, which in 2002 was a problem and continues to be in 2016, a very large problem. So, with those three items in consideration, we're looking for you to give us a consensus to either move forward with the master plan, or a consensus to make decisions on the three items, as discussed.
Okay. Maybe I'll start here a little bit.
You have at it, Commissioner Shaw.
Okay. The fishing industry in this community is pretty strong. And I think before we move forward with anything, especially with the whole plan, because I think what I'm gonna say is probably gonna influence the whole plan, and you know what I'm gonna say, I think we really need, and I really appreciate the information you gave us last time, Denise, about the boat ramp into the Willamette. Very good information. I think to make sure we get the buy-in from the fishing community and have a better case for whichever way that boat ramp is gonna go, is that we get maybe a consultants involved to give us a, this is why, this is what's gonna happen if this goes into the Willamette. Because I know you gave us that information, but I think for the benefit of the community and the fishing community and stuff, I think they want something that's, here's the reason.
And I'll just, as a, as a piece of information to consider, is that if we go that route, the city needs to be committal to the expense of that boat ramp in total. It is not going to be, it is not currently on the Oregon State Marine Board's trajectory to install anything or fund anything, as they are currently about 75 to 90% of our funding for any of our boat ramps. This would then be something that would, the city would need to commit those funds towards. It is a general fund item. And being that we're looking at extensively more funding, just wanna make sure you're aware of what we're looking at funding-wise.
I understand, but I think we need to have an official response, probably from a consultant that says, this is the, if we do the boat ramp into the Willamette, like the fishermen are telling me anyway, that here's why we may not want to do that. And I think we need to have that kind of spelled out, instead of all just us here talking. So, how would we do that if we wanted to get a consultant to give us that answer?
I think some of that information is in the hydrology study that shows you the flow rates and the volume currents through the Willamette.
So, it'd be pretty easy for somebody to take that, and, because I know that the first consultant to study was just based to do the Clackamas River. And I know there was a little part in there about the Willamette. I think now, if we could get somebody to use that information that was in there and put that, okay, what happens, what's the full story if we do this in the Willamette instead?
And just as historical information, I know that the John Storm debris boom, the transient dock in John Storm itself, the cost factors that will, another cost factor that will be on our ticket would be for the permitting, because of the high rate of scour along the Willamette. And then, the additional riparian buffering that would probably be part of the permitting process, if we are even able to get a permit.
Right. Understood. So.
So, Mayor and Commissioners, thank you very much. So, just to kind of recap the request on that, I know that Denise had asked, do we want to move forward with master plan or address each of these issues? And what I appreciate about what Commissioner Shaw is, you've talked about the boat ramp, and the request there is to have some additional consultant work on that, to look at, maybe an assessment based on the products that we have already, as cheap as we can do that, and bring that back to the Commission?
Correct.
Okay.
But see, Wyatt, that's, that boat ramp will influence everything else we do down there, because they, all of a sudden, the boat parking's gonna be there, the RV park, and what do we do at the existing boat ramp location? So, I'm not sure how far we can go into the master plan without maybe getting that solved.
We can talk about that. And then, there's the two additional items, the two other items, can we just have the Commission discuss each of those?
Yep.
So, the RV park, master plan states removal. Currently, that brings in roughly $100,000, roughly $100,000 a year in revenue.
What's the balance sheet?
I can tell you off the top of my head, on that piece.
Okay.
I remember Scott told us it actually made money, so.
It does make money.
It does.
It is in the black.
But it is.
So, that's good.
So, in terms of the moneymaker portion of it, the RV dump station is by donation and not required payment. We still make anywhere between $15,000 and $20,000 a year on that portion. So, the roughly, we can be anywhere from $80,000 to $125,000 on revenues for just the RV impacts.
Okay, so you say removal. Are you talking about moving it, or just getting rid of it altogether?
The 2002 water master plan, waterfront master plan is calling out a complete removal. The department.
Can you, Denise, since I was not there at the time, what was the rationale for removing the RV park?
I wasn't there at that time either. I don't, I don't know what the rationale was.
I wasn't here.
I don't know what the rationale was, other than I think that it is bent towards restoration of the riparian areas and more of picnicking, general park area, and easing of the parking issues that we're, we were having back in 2002, which we are still having. But we have, as a department, I would say, a few years ago, we went forward and did a RV park improvement plan. We've got a 60% set of construction documents ready to go. So, if we were, we're kind of in that juxtaposition, do we move forward with an improvement, or do we look towards removal?
Okay, so, number three?
And number three is the boat ramp circulation, obviously, with.
And talk about the McDonald's park.
Oh, the McDonald's, sorry. The parking lot adjacent to McDonald's, it's owned by Urban Renewal. I know there was a comment to purchase that from Urban Renewal and use it for, use the RV park or for overflow parking.
Okay, well, my sense of where we're at in that, I mean, we go back to 2002, and then we can go to 99, and then we could probably go to, you know, 84, and probably 76 before that, where we've done waterfront master plans. So, we've probably spent close to $1 million on, on alleged plans that have never really done anything about what's actually happening down there. So, I think we're better off tackling these problems individually, figuring out how we're gonna deal with them, and then the rest of it's gonna happen kind of as it commercially is gonna happen. So, I think we need to talk about these three issues in, in another work session or at a Commission meeting, and, but I think I'd like to, at least a couple of these, you know, we need to figure out what we're gonna do about moving forward in the next six months.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. So, what I'm hearing is, we've got, we understand, we've talked before, I have a little bit of limited, it's a little bit outside my bailiwick, but what I understand before is, we have a broad master plan for the general area, and the question is, do we need to tighten up the master plan for the specific area? And we have a sense amongst the Commission that we've got a pretty good feeling about what's going on down there. And to summarize, what I'm hearing is, the boat ramp is a critical component, so having a consultant look at and summarize that a little bit for us would be helpful. And I think, Mayor, you're saying, we could, we could provide a little more information on each of these three components, and the Commission probably feels comfortable making some decisions.
Sure.
Without another master planning process?
I'd like to offer my two cents on the RV park. And I like the concept, it looks like it's gonna be a much more attractive and more shaded and comfortable facility than what we have now. When we're looking at the riverfront and redevelopment of the Willamette Falls area, we're gonna need more accommodations. This is a beautiful site, it's walkable and accessible for an RV user, it generates money for the city, and to my mind, the park is very spacious. It can accommodate lots of different uses, and it does so now. So, I would be in general, generally in favor of an enhanced RV park.
Okay. Commissioner Smith, you got anything to add?
A lot. I agree in terms of the RV park. I think that, I was surprised that it was open, it just opened again, and when did we open it?
Two weeks ago.
It's been open two and a half weeks.
It's packed.
They found a host.
Yeah.
We found three-part coast.
So, it's packed. I think because the connectivity from the RV park to downtown, to the Willamette Falls area, all that makes it a really important piece to keep an RV park there, I think. I am frustrated kind of about all these topics, because they are all intertwined, and it's very hard to, and which is probably why we have done nothing. I've been on here since 2008, we've talked, we talked about the improvement plan for the RV park. We even talked about the south part beyond the RV park as a camping area at one time. So, I think I agree that the RV park should stay, I would like to see that improved upon. The boat ramp, the two options that were brought to us were horrible.
I agree.
And, so with the option of picking one of those two, I picked none. And which I think is, I think that's what Brian's, you know, asking about the Willamette, the Willamette side. I don't want to pay another consultant, though, to tell us something that we may already know, I don't know. The fact that we have so many studies of this, so I don't know how to address that.
It would seem to be that the easiest way would be to get somebody from the Oregon Marine Board, I mean, obviously, they have hydrologists and people, somebody could come to one of our meetings and explain why it's bad to go into the Willamette and it's best to come into the Clackamas. I think, you know, we could do that fairly simply, without having to hire, you know, some guy, pay him $10,000 to put on paper what he already knows.
Well, if we can come to an agreement at some point soon on RV park, that helps to some degree. I guess, you know, what balances the massive intrusion into the park with a new boat ramp, if we considered we weren't gonna have the RV park, then that would add park space. But, the, the piece of the park that is primarily used is the park that they want to put a boat, the boat ramp in, and it takes out a huge section of the park.
Not much of trees.
So, I, I, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with that. The parking lot frustrates me more than the boat ramp. One, because we have a for-sale sign on it, and we have four years, and we're still debating whether or not we want to sell it.
Well, we aren't. The Urban Renewal Commission is. So, let's be clear on that.
Right. Urban Renewal Commission. So, I think that.
What do you think?
I think we, if we're still, if, well, if the Urban Renewal Commission hasn't decided whether they want to sell it or not, they need to figure that out and pull the sign if we're not even considering it. I was probably one of the people on the Urban Renewal Commission who wasn't that excited about selling it, but also knew that any, any proposals or purchase of that property would come through the city, and we would have the ability to discuss issues like parking underneath whatever was built there, or anything, or at least have some process in figuring out how to deal with the parking situation in the event that something was built there. So, I feel like, you know, there's a process there that, that can be dealt with, but if, if there's people on the Urban Renewal Commission that don't want to sell that property at all, then we shouldn't have a sign up.
Well, I agree with you there, and I think that, I think the solution to that would be for the city Parks Department to lease that from the Urban Renewal Commission at a, you know, a dollar a year, or whatever, we would be required to do that for, say, a five-year lease. That puts certainty into that lot. At the same time, it still lets it sit there and gain value, because once we do start bringing stuff out of the ground at the Legacy Project and at Rossman too, there's gonna be renewed interest in some kind of, you know, whether it's hotels, restaurants, or whatever, and that's gonna be, you know, a prime place for that at that point in time. So, maybe that's a solution. That at least gives the boaters and the fisher guys certainty for at least five years.
Well, for parking.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, also for events down there, too. So, it's great overflow parking. So, as we know, there's gonna be another 1,000 residents living down there at the Cove and the apartments, and there's gonna be more use of that park. And we've gotta figure out how we can make the best use of that and maintain it.
So, here's the ugly question that no one wants to ask about this particular piece of property, and that is, if we, if the city leases it from the Urban Renewal Commission, and we are using it for, quote, "overflow parking," what kind of planning issues are we going to run into?
It can't be, the paved part can probably.
Finally, we get to hear from this airway.
Is there any paved part over there?
Yes.
Yes.
I thought it was just gravel.
No, it's paved, the main section's paved.
Oh, okay.
If you expand a parking lot, you'll have to go through a public review process to verify that it complies with standards, all parking lots, so any new portions, some of the standards include paved surfaces and landscaping and things like that. You can certainly go for a variance in front of the planning commission for those types of things, similar to how the Cove did with the temporary parking lot, just during the Phase One of construction. So if you're expanding a parking lot or using a parking lot which was never permitted in the first place, you'd see planning. But if you were just using the same space that's already, already been used for parking, then you wouldn't need to see us.
So are, in, in these events, because I haven't been down on that side, like recently, are we utilizing the grass as well as the parking lot? So is that, is that legal?
So some of the things that we would look at are environmental impacts and things like that as well.
Just understanding that we have to follow the same rules everybody else does. So we can't be, you know, I went to the, the Summer Fest at BCT and they were parking people in this big grass field. So I assume once or twice a year is no big deal.
And that's what happens down there now. I mean, for the most part, that paved parking lot handles the majority of excess parking. But like during the family festival, we have them up on the grass and stuff. And I think at the high point of the fishing season, too, there might be a couple of weekends where the trailers and trucks are parked up there, too. But it's occasional that it happens. So for the most part, we really don't have to do anything to that property. Just maybe tie it up for five years or something so that we have a...
I'd want, I'd, I'd want the city manager and the planning director to do a little bit more investigation on what exactly we would have to do to be, for us to be legally doing that stuff there. Just so that, I mean, you agree, we have to all follow the same rules, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. Have we covered this?
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate really the insights from the commission. Denise, I just want to make sure, so I feel like we have some direction. Did you have answers to your questions then? What I'm hearing from the commission is not a desire to move forward with a new master planning process for this area. And I'm hearing that there is interest in maintaining the RV park.
Correct. But also...
And I'm seeing, no, it's for the record.
That we are moving forward with repairing the existing boat ramp.
We are. We actually...
That's not part of this.
That's not part of this, but we do have contractors coming on site. On July 18th, the in-water work period starts on the 15th, but they're mobilizing and being onsite on the 18th. They'll finish the boat ramp by August 31st. It'll be open by September of this year.
Good. So Renata, you have to nod out loud.
On the boat ramp, I'm wondering with the reduced water levels on the Clackamas more and more, whether this is going to be an ongoing issue. I mean, sometimes the channel is pretty darn narrow and you wonder how far boats would be able to go up the Clackamas even if they wanted to.
Well, this boat ramp primarily is not for boats going up the Clackamas so much as it is boats that are utilizing the confluence of the Clackamas and the Willamette for salmon season. Now, there are some boats that go upriver. Typically, those are flat-bottom jet boats that, that don't have much of a draft. So, you know, I, I don't think that's really the issue. And anybody who can predict what a river is going to do in the next 10 years, you know...
Well, it sounds like we have funds already in place or a good chance of getting funds to fix the boat ramp, some, either in its current location or somewhere nearby, but not any resources to build anything along the Willamette. And that's a pretty compelling argument for me.
Okay, I think what we're talking about is we're going to discuss the boat ramp issue and the other two issues, either at another work session with some more information provided by staff. Is that, I think that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, and we're looking at some options for, if we can get a, like an inexpensive consultant. We don't want to spend too much money, is what I heard. And/or some help from the Marine Board.
I have a, the facilities manager, Janine Belec, is very savvy in regards to how the funding works, the reasons why they have their transportation, river transportation rated the way they do. And that in turn relates to funding mechanisms. So I can have Janine, Janine come in.
Okay, and then somebody from, you know, the Marine Board or Marine Board staff that knows about the hydrology and, and the reasons why it's bad to be on the Willamette versus being on the Clackamas.
I will work with Janine on that.
Okay.
Mayor, if you could summarize the McDonald's piece one more time. I think we talked about, there's interest in further research from planning and the city manager.
Yeah, I think basically what we're saying is we, we would take this back to the Urban Renewal Commission and say, if, if, you know, once staff's had a chance to digest what we've talked about tonight, that the city would be interested in, in like a five-year or a 10-year lease on the property for a nominal fee. And that, that cements it as what it is for now. And that still allows us, with some timing inside that document, that if we did get a compelling offer from some developer who wanted to build something there, we could change that use and find another place to put the park.
Denise, does that cover the items pretty well? Are any other questions?
It looks like I will be bringing some more information back for another work session.
Thank you, Denise.
Thank you.
We're going to move back to PC 16 dash 074. I'm going to turn the gavel over to Commissioner Smith. I have a neighborhood meeting to attend, which should be fascinating.
I'd rather, I think I'm going to leave.
So I apologize to, to Director Turway for missing her very first presentation, but I'm, I'm sure I'll be seeing you more in the future, so.
She'll be on TV. Watch it later on tonight.
Mayor, as you're walking out the door, I think it's an appropriate time to say, I know that city manager Tony Conkles is out of the office today, but he had announced that Laura was, was, is now our new community development director. And I know we got the sign a little bit wrong because it's just within the last couple of days. But congratulations to Laura and we're really excited to have her onboard. She's going to be an excellent addition to our executive team, so.
Yeah, we did this last time.
Well, forgive me, I was on vacation then, so.
Yeah, no, we, we announced it still.
This is my personal congratulations to Laura.
Welcome back again, Laura.
All right, well, I am pleased to announce a project that we've worked on with both members of our development community, our community development department stakeholders group, as well as other members of the public, to create a more streamlined and quicker and easier and more fiscally responsible process for minor improvements to commercial buildings.
Apologies, Laura, but I can barely hear you.
Can you hear me now?
There you go. I think that's probably better.
Much better, thank you.
All right. So I'm pleased to announce a process by which we can create a more streamlined timeline for minor improvements to commercial, industrial, multifamily and office buildings for minor improvements. So what we have proposed tonight is not any changes to specific requirements in the code, but a process by which the timelines will be shortened, shorter for review by the planning division as well as the associated fees. And with that, I have Kelly Reed, one of our assistant planner, to discuss the project.
Thanks, Laura. Thanks, commissioners. Just want to quickly walk you through the amendments and answer any questions you might have about them. These amendments will be brought to you next week on the 20th as an ordinance for first reading. All right. So first, I just want to quickly go through levels of land use review. We have type one, type two, type three and type four, and they kind of escalate in, in terms of how discretionary they are and how much time it takes to get done. So type four decisions actually come to you, the city commission. Type one decisions are reviewed at a staff level. Type two at a staff level. Type three, planning commission usually. So we kind of move up as you count up. And just to give some examples, the, an example of a type one project is really just over-the-counter new homes, for example, just a new single-family home, a, a small addition, a lot line adjustment. Simple projects come us, before us as a type one review. And we can do that usually over the counter or within about a week. Type two projects are, they do require public notice. So we have land use notice signs go out. We mail letters to people in the vicinity. And then we write a staff report and those decisions are appealable to the city commission. And so an example of a type two site plan design and review would be a new, a new building. And then we have a, for smaller projects that aren't, you know, a full new building, we have a minor site plan process that is a slightly condensed version, still requires public notice. And, and so that's up there as like a 900 square foot addition is an example of that. So currently, the, the first row there is a new window or storefront improvements. Those really small projects currently go through the type two process and have public notice and take sometimes one to two months to complete. And so what we're proposing with these amendments is to take some of those that don't involve any discretion from staff and make them a type one process so we can issue those permits more quickly. And example of some of this, some of our code that's non-discretionary means basically it's black and white, there's no gray area, this, the proposal either meets our code or it doesn't. And so some of the examples of, of our code is, you know, they're mostly numerical standards. So the first one's facade transparency. We require 60% of the facade be transparent in the form of windows or doors. So it's really easy for us to look at those development applications and see it meets it or it doesn't meet it. It's got 60% or it doesn't. Another one is when people come in and want to reconfigure their parking lot or add new parking spaces, we, you know, they have to be a certain size based on what angle they're at. And so we look, make sure the parking lot circulation will work and that the parking spaces are sized appropriately according to our standards. So those are also really simple, black and white, non-discretionary. We can't, you can't argue with whether it meets that or not. So those are examples of the code that we're talking about that we'd be able to review over the counter quickly without any public notice. Few examples of projects that we've seen, a lot of these are downtown storefront improvements that these, with the proposed amendments, these projects would be reviewed as a type one, more quicker process. So this one was just addition of windows and doors to this building here on Main Street. Another one downtown, this was some kind of facade improvements, storefront improvements. You see another one here, addition of some roll-up doors on Main Street. Out here, this is on Beaver Creek, it was a new bike rack and a new roll-up door. And the Masonic Lodge had, got a new storefront. And this is Eastham School. They did a new fence and some landscaping. And so all of these were projects that, that we reviewed at a type two process. The review fee is about $800 and it takes one to two months for us to approve that. And so we'd like to be able to do that more quickly for these business owners and for these community members. So we've taken the list of subways, another one, sorry about that. So the, the way that it would work is the applicant would come in with their plans and drawings and then they would fill out an application form. Instead of submitting a written narrative or written code responses to us, they would fill out a simple application form like this, along with their plans. And then we could either review it over the counter or take it back to our desks for a few days and then issue that afterwards. So we've got a long list of types of projects that would, that could qualify for a type one site plan. And so we've vetted these with the development community, with the planning commission, with the citizen involvement committee and in the community development department stakeholders group. And so we, we've looked through all these. None of these types of projects involve any discretion. So they're all kind of like those numerical type of standards that I was showing you earlier. And then there are a few exceptions. We would, we still want to have public notice and ability to comment and appeal for certain types of projects. So these would be not eligible for a type one review. This is any activity that initiates any other higher-level review. So if it's in an overlay district, for example, historic overlay, if it's in natural resource, if it needs natural resources review, would not be eligible for this. Any use that's not permitted outright, so conditional uses and non-conforming uses, any proposal that requires non-conforming upgrades, and then any proposal in which the applicant's proposing to modify our code. We want that, you know, that is discretionary and so that needs to go, go for public notice. Then last month, when we took this before the planning commission, they added that fifth one, which is any proposal that is within, subject to historic overlay district. They wanted that to go, be able to have public notice. And they limited it to the activities A through C. And so if we go back, those are replacement of exterior building materials, addition of windows or doors, or changes to the roof lines or parapets. So the planning commission felt that they still want projects that are in historic overlay that would be either a historic resource outside of a district or a project that's within a historic district to be publicly noticed, even if it is non-discretionary. They felt that a public comment was valuable and, and so wanted to add that exception. And then the last one is excluding properties within the downtown design district. And that was proposed by Jonathan Stone was at the meeting, the planning commission hearing, and requested that addition. However, he sent, subsequently sent an email in requesting, saying that he was mistaken and that he does not actually advocate for that to be added. So I have his email that I want to pass around. And so staff is actually recommending that because of this, that we, we could remove that because the planning commission added it only at his request. So now that that request is no longer on the table. Thank you, Wyatt.
So when did the downtown design district, when did that come into effect? Have you ever heard that before?
Yeah.
I hadn't heard that before.
It's, it's basically Fifth through 10th Streets downtown. And that was probably adopted, I would imagine, in 2004. And it, it has slightly different rules that apply there and mostly related to building height. Basically, can't go higher than the Masonic Lodge. Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Sorry, tried to get through that very quickly. So if you have any questions.
Renata?
Renata, go ahead.
Yeah, I did have a question. So I'm assuming that when staff gets this type one site plan or design review, you would be evaluating the request consistent with the city code. So whatever change they're proposing would, of course, meet all the standards of the city.
Absolutely, yeah. There's no change to code. It's only a change to the process and all the code would still apply.
I love the idea of a streamlined process. It's fantastic. But then it comes with a 20-page application form.
Yes, that, we realize that. And so that, you know, we included every potential situation that could come up. And so I think what we'd like to do is have a short, two or three-page base application. And then depending on what type of project it is, we could have addendums to that. So if there's outdoor lighting that's proposed, we could add in the outdoor lighting addendum, but not include it all in one giant 20-page application.
Yeah.
That makes good sense to me.
Another thing that we are going to add to this is with the second reading, if you choose to move it forward, would be a resolution to adopt new fees for this process. So in addition, from going from two months to potentially over the counter or a week, you would be going from a fee from the planning division of $850 to one that's much, much smaller. And so we'll probably be adopting two fees, one for like the quick, easy ones, and then another one for the longer reviews. But it'll be much significantly smaller than the current review process.
Great. All right, any other questions?
I think this is fantastic. I love the direction this is heading. It's great customer service to provide quick turnaround and lower cost. Thank you for doing this.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yeah, so I agree with Commissioner Melgenberg. Mingleburg. Mingleburg, sorry, Renata.
Thank you.
I'm getting better. Hey, so I like the, obviously the simple form that you're going to come up with. You know, one thing that we all try to do up here when we're out in the community is speak about how business-friendly this city is, especially when we have to go to these ribbon cuttings and stuff. ribbon cuttings and stuff. So, so that's good. And I really appreciate the efforts that the planning commission went through with this because I watched it on TV, so I watched their whole session on this. So I know they put a lot of effort into this, so I appreciate that. And we already have a type one designation here and we're just adding to it. So it's not exactly like we're adding a whole different type to it.
That's correct.
It's interesting because in the comprehensive plan, it addresses this, I found this interesting in some of the, what you sent us. It says the design review, site plan and design, or site plan and design review provisions are intended to promote design integrity and neighborhood livability. I think that's pretty cool. And new design guidelines were added to the zoning ordinance in 2001. It is expected that the guidelines will continue to be refined to strike the right balance of predictability for developers and neighborhood protection and livability. So that's where this is all kind of headed, you know. So, so not only is it going to be simplified for people to apply, but it's also taking and allowing you folks to do a lot more, be more efficient with your time too. So that's, it's kind of a win-win for everybody here, so.
I agree.
Okay.
All right, thank you. I think that's it.
Very good, thank you.
That brings us to 16 dash four to two Wesley Lynn Park ballot measure resubmittal discussion. And I think that's Denise.
So commissioners, we are presenting you again with the Wesley Lynn Park ballot measure resubmittal. This is for the roadway that Icon Construction is proposing to service nine house, a nine-house subdivision. It's directly adjacent to the undeveloped northwestern portion of Wesley Lynn Park and off of Leland Road. This is again a resubmittal, so this is needed and necessary to hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution at the upcoming meeting, which as soon as we receive the language from the developer would, and if you approve to go forward with it would be July 20th or August 3rd at the commission meeting.
Okay, Renata?
I think because the vote was so close that it makes sense to ask again with more clarification. I think the public could rightly have been confused thinking that here's a developer taking park land and, and they would, you know, inherently maybe be against that, but with the easement in place and some of these additional details and additional assets to the park, if more of that were explained in the ballot measure and in the information that's provided to voters, I think the outcome might be different. And so I would absolutely support taking this out again in November.
Yeah, for sure.
Yes, I agree. So let's go ahead with that.
I will put an agenda item packet together. Again, it would be per the language final.
Right.
From the developer and it would be for either July 20th or August 3rd.
Okay, good. And then city managers' report.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Happy to be here and back up for Tony. Just a couple of things, we've got, just a reminder that we've got the first city celebration coming up. Friday, July 22nd and Saturday, July 23rd. And as you, many of you know, there's going to be lots of concerts in downtown and the Citizens Bank made main stage and food and fun for the whole family. If you want more information, it's available at downtownoregancity.org, just as it sounds, that's how it's spelled. And you can see all the happenings that are going to take place in a couple of weeks. So looking forward to that. Also, I have for the commission tonight, and you received an email from our city recorder today, that annually, the League of Oregon Cities asks for each city to give their input into what are the highest legislative priorities. And so we're handing these out in hard copy tonight. I know that Katie also sent this out electronically. And we're asking for the commissioners to provide to Katie Durfee, the assistant to the city manager, any insights that they have. And then we will bring this back to you, the summary of the results at the next meeting on the 20th, so that we can submit our proposal by the 22nd to the league. And I wanted to give, so that's the sort of administrative components. And then I wanted to give Jim Band a quick chance to give you an update on what's happening in police. I know there's been a lot of tough activity happening this last couple of weeks and I just wanted to have Jim have an opportunity to say something to you.
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner. I, I have to just publicly, I really have to just talk about this briefly. I, you know, all this turmoil nationally is, really gets, gets under the skin of a lot of cops. The assumptions of what everybody is based on what, you know, some very horrible incidents that some real people who do not represent our profession will do, that's hard enough. And then Dallas happened. And I went to work, it's just, the whole thing's real heavy. I'm at work and I have somebody walk in, in the morning and this blew me away. I had a box this big set in front of me and it was from Pure Bliss Bakery. Which is my love language. And, and like, what is this? And it's a huge box and there was a card on it. And I opened it up and it was actually from the Lynch's. Yeah. And, and they said, hey, just thinking of you guys, supporting you guys. And it really was a big deal to me. I go set it in the squadron for access for everybody and not long after that, a huge thing of cookies comes in. And then another huge thing of cookies comes in. And then I hear Jimmy O's is dropping off lunch for everybody and emails and emails and food and overwhelming. And then I think that night, I get pictures that somebody had gone to our fence around our parking lot and tied red, white and blue flowers and blue ribbon all the way around. I can't thank this community enough for stuff like that. It is, I have talked to other police departments and they've had, you know, a tray of cookies dropped off. Nobody gets the support that we have. This is such a patriotic community. It makes me so proud to work here and to represent this community. And I just, I got to publicly say thank you because it is so meaningful that people, they don't just think we want you guys to board, they actually pick up the phone, they send an email, they drop by. If you went up there right now, it is a carb fest in our squadron. And we just see it as love, love for your police department. And it really makes us want to be better. You know, it just impresses on everybody how important they are to the community. And at the end of the day, it makes us all really want to do the best job possible. So thank you from the bottom of all of our hearts to our community.
Thank you.
It is weird because, you know, it didn't directly affect us, but indirectly it does. And you're getting that kind of response when it just indirectly does, you know. We've already gone through a directory incident, you know, but I think you're doing something right there, Chief, so it's good, you know.
Thank you. It's, it's, it's a, it's a cool community. We're blessed.
Thank you, Chief. And finally, commissioners, John Lewis has a report and update on the Cove and some activity that's taking place there.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Well, I wanted to, I do want to be short, but I also, there's a lot going on with the Cove. It's become, so the Cove is, as we all know it, is now morphed into the Garden Cove and it's the 244 apartment units on Lot Two. So I'm going to talk through it and I've got a couple of maps and graphics that I want to show to you and just talk through that because the, this project has been in the works for probably 10 years.
Yeah.
Talking to some of the consultants that have been involved with it, they've been in, involved with it for several years. It is really, we're talking about having a pre-construction meeting on Tuesday next week. So it's moving very quickly all of a sudden.
Whoa.
So just wanted to bring you up to speed with that. So really if you, the emphasis right now is that they want to start this year. And in order to start this year, most of this work needs to be done in the dry season because we get too wet. This is mostly a grading project at this point in time. Obviously, they got to build the apartments and they got to build the roadway and the infrastructure. But the front end of this is all about earthwork, digging earthwork out and piling it somewhere else and compacting it somewhere else. So just so you know, Lot One is where the, they're going to be doing some excavation work there. So this is a cut and fill balance thing. So because they're in the floodplain, they can't add fill. They have to cut from somewhere to put it somewhere else. And they really need most of that dirt on Lot Two, right? And so they're cutting dirt out of Lot One and they'll be moving it over to Lot Two. At the same time, they're going to be building a small parking lot over there for access to the trail because they'll be impacting the current parking that's along Main Street Extension. So Lot One will become a temporary parking lot. That green dotted line represents the, there we go. Thank you, Katie, for helping me out with that. So that green dotted line right there is where, it's pretty much our existing bike path, that they're going to enhance that a little bit. This is our existing trail over here. Lot Two is where the 244 garden apartments are going to be placed and most, or all the fill will be placed. And then the North Park area is where most of the borrow material or the cut material will come from. And they may utilize some of this off the Tri-City pile that's sitting out there as well. And then of course the pathway, there's some provisions for temporary pathway access through the existing path. Lots of big trucks, big trucks, big excavators, the kind of trucks that you won't necessarily see driving down the roadway. They're the larger tired trucks that move a lot of dirt from short distances. The biggest concern is for that to keep the site safe, they need to make sure that things are fenced off. Main Street Extension is generally going to be closed. We're still working out some of the details on that, but that's their desire is to close Main Street Extension and keep that closed for about four months. So we're going to start and they're wanting to start in, in July. And like I said, we have some concerns because if you remember, we're doing a waterline project on 15th Street. It also impacts the intersection of Main Street. So we're, we're still working on those details. But the other thing is, is they're going to be using this haul route to get the material from the North Park area across the rest of the Cove site into Lot Two. So that's going to be, you know, a busy traffic area where these trucks are moving back and forth. So again, they're, they're looking for an early notice to proceed and we're planning to implement, we typically don't like to do this, but this is an unusual project. So implement a permit system whereby we're giving them erosion control permit early. We're going to let them do some of the concrete crushing work that happens on Lot Two. We're going to let them do that early. And then we're going to move into a grading permit and let them do the grading and then the utilities and the roadway. So what they've told us is they're going to be six days a week, as many hours as they can work and lots of crew. So it'll be a very busy, active place, but it's not going to be very accessible to the public, okay? Let's see.
Can I have a question about that? In a previous work session, we heard that there was concern about wetlands mitigation and water quality in the Cove. Does this grading project affect that in any way?
It helps it.
Okay, different part of the site?
Well, I think there, there was some discussion about Lot One, which has really surprised me when I heard about that. There is a low area there that we've never considered it a wetland, but evidently it's got some wetland plantings in there. So the, the group that does the assessment is going to take a much closer look at that. There's also some wetlands that will require some protection between Lot Two and the Oregon City Shopping Center. And those are areas where I think, you know, keep in mind, in order to get that erosion control fencing in the proper way, a lot of the sites got concrete on it and concrete, you know, blocks and materials and things. So they're going to have to get in there and scrape some things just to even get the fencing in. And I don't know if you guys have been on the email chain, but you know, just getting equipment in and moving dirt doesn't necessarily mean it's excavation at that point, but it does kind of look like it's soil disturbance. So we've been hearing from the Kenehan neighborhood lately with a lot of inappropriate or misinformation. And, you know, I suspect you're going to hear those kind of things here too. One of the first things that's going to happen is a lot of tree removals. So keep that in mind. I really want to focus in on the North Park because I'm, I want to make sure you fully understand what the, what the plan has always been, but you know, I'm not sure how familiar you are with the specific details.
All right.
Thank you.
Katie, can you?
And I can add to that as well, there is no work below the ordinarily high watermark and there is no proposed work with any wetland. There is proposed work within the vegetated corridor, which is that landscaping of lush native vegetation between the water feature like the Cove and development. And there's mitigation associated with that that will occur.
Yeah. All right, so this is the North Park area. It's significant in just the amount of material that they're removing and some of you are familiar about, I guess it's probably been, I bet it's long, it's probably been 10 years since they did some work along the Clackamas River there. And that's some of the area that's actually being removed. So the plantings that were established through that project will be removed. So everything that's shown in the red highlight area and, Renata, I'm not even sure if you can see what's on the screen to tell you the truth, but.
I can't actually. I'll, I'll look at it later.
Okay.
Sorry.
So everything that's in the red bubbled area is going to be cleared and excavated. So they get down to, we're actually showing the bubble in the water. I think again, as Laura stated, they're going to the ordinary, just above the ordinary high watermark in that area. But, so they won't be in the water. But again, a lot of earthwork and you can see the pathways in that section as well. So the staging of the earthwork will be made clear to pedestrians that are using the pathway and be made safe to do that. But there is going to have to be a temporary pathway as they maneuver, as they allow the, so they're going to do some excavation work, get it down to where they need to and then establish a temporary path and then work the other side. And it, it's going to take some, you know, jockeying just to keep pedestrians safe and make sure that heavy equipment can maneuver without hurting anybody.
So there's, there's enough dirt coming off of those two locations there to do what we need to do on.
Lot Two.
The apartment of Lot Two.
Yes, that's correct.
So how much?
John, are they, are they doing grading for both the garden apartments and the full condo development as well? Are they phasing it over a couple of years?
The only grading permit that we're giving them is for really the north, well, Lot One, the North Park and Lot Two. So those, Lot One, you know, is relatively minor. It's a small amount of like three, 32, 165 cubic yards. The North Park is, is quite large. It's about 60,000 cubic yards. And they're going to grade that to basically finish grade for what we would expect to see in the park. Okay? And then, and then, did I say that right? For North Park. And then Lot Two is going to be, they're going to fill all that material. And if they need, if they need more from the Tri-City stockpile, they'll pull it from there. But that, the idea is to fill that to finish grade as well. Okay? Let's see, next one, Katie. I just think it's important that we go through this. Sorry if it's taking a little while. It's just important to know the significance of the work there because it's, it's a large-scale grading project. This is just again, kind of showing, I know, I know a lot of you aren't used to seeing topography, but really from the fence line along the wastewater treatment plant, we're going to have a gentle slope down into kind of a bowl, which, which I think a lot of people think of as kind of the future stage area for an amphitheater. And there's a couple of settlement basins in there just to make sure as that site is completed and even though we'll see seeding in there, we just don't want to have any erosion that ends up in the, in the Cove or in the river. So that'll change quite a bit. The, and they're only going to put the one lower pathway in between those two basins. But in the long run, there'll be, there'll be a pathway all around, all the way around the, the kind of the amphitheater area. The next one, Katie. This one here, Katie, I might need you to zoom in on a little bit. The reason why I'm showing you cross-sections is because there's sections of excavation on the North Park area that are going to be over 20 feet deep. So I just, again, that's always been part of the plan.
But that's not where the, that is where the excess dirt was put at. That's just the natural, because.
Right, it's mostly, mostly down near the ordinary high watermark where the deepest the excavation is.
But where we stockpile the dirt, that's a different location.
That's further up the hill.
Yeah.
Right. And it's deep there too. But, so that top left, yeah, maybe zoom in just a little bit because these are hard to read, not maybe too much. There you go. See what happens with that. The, I know these are engineered drawings, but yeah, there you go. That kind of shows the, on the, on the scale there, on the left, you see that's feet. This is exaggerated a little bit. This is exaggerated a little bit, so it's feet of fill. So I'm just, I'm just showing you down near the ordinary low watermark. We're going to cut into that bank quite a bit, and then it's going to, the pathway, in fact, you know, in the, in the future, there's going to be quite a drop in the pathway. So you'll be dropping in and out of that as opposed to, right now, it's pretty much flat, flat walk.
Wow.
So, you know, I'm just conscientious of, you know, even Gladstone, I think is going to have a little bit of, I know when they removed the, or when the bridge got removed and we had to restore that area, there was some desire for a little more landscaping along there. In this case, we won't have that, but, and there'll be a pretty big change in topography there. So we can go on to the next one, Katie. I just want to show you the fill side and some of the finished grade associated with the, the 200, the Lot 2, which is where the apartments will be. This is just, again, another topographic map. So Main Street Extension will be now more kind of on the low side. And as you drive, well, let's see, as you were driving from 15th Street on your way to Oregon City Shopping Center now, instead, you can kind of look across that site. There's a little bit of a berm there. Well, it'll be a significant berm there now. So you'll, you both, you won't be able to see the Oregon City Shopping Center when you traverse along Main Street in the future. And just go to the next slide, Katie, it's another kind of.
Main Street staying where it's at, the location, or?
Pretty close. It's, no, it drops. It drops.
So it's a new street?
It drops down, new street, new roundabout. But.
And that was part of that deal, John, where he said we'd get a full street improvement there because we're actually giving them the dirt.
We're going to have full street improvements along there.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I know they'll be asking for SDC reimbursements, so some of that they'll be reimbursed for. Like the other profile drawing, I really just kind of wanted to show, the top drawing there, Katie can, you can kind of see the dotted line is the existing grade. And you probably don't need, let's just see if we can stay right there, Katie. And do you see the dotted line on this drawing?
Yeah.
So you can see that's the existing grade and then the final grade. So on the right-hand side of that, move to your cursor to the right, right in there, that's Main Street. So you will see some stair step. Most of that will be done with rockery walls. And then, of course, the apartment buildings will be sitting on top of that as well. And then on the other side, it's kind of, so that's kind of a long version, kind of going from maybe 205 to the Cove. And then the other is kind of a slice, if you're looking at, kind of on the backside of the Oregon City Shopping Center out to Main Street Extension. And, you know, there's, there's some complicated fill in that area and some real geotechnical wonder, I guess, if, for, because we want to make sure whatever fill is in there is structurally sound for the buildings. So a lot of work and a lot of detail that's going to culminate in an initial round of, you know, site excavation, tree cutting. We know how that can often stir folks that don't necessarily understand that there's a lot of effort that went into the approval. And I just want you to know that ahead of time. I'll be talking to the Natural Resource Advisory Committee about it tomorrow as well. And then, I guess.
John, would you normally have a requirement of a developer to do a board that talks about what the plan is so that people driving by can say, oh, there's something happening here, this is the vision?
So we have.
It might be helpful.
Yeah, and one of the, the first graphic that I showed you, I didn't, I didn't cover it, but there's public involvement process, which includes four project signs. Just for the traveling path, traffic, we'll be requiring two variable message signs. And then on the bike path itself, we're going to require three different signs that have project information on it. There'll be a city webpage, which we're talking to the developer about developing their own project webpage that we can link to. And then for the businesses that use Main Street and that are along Main Street, we're going to be reaching out to them with hand-delivered correspondence about what the project is about. And then, of course, you saw the citywide letter that kind of shows all the construction activity, one project of which is this one.
I think that was really well done. Thanks for taking the initiative to do that.
That's it for me.
All right, thank you.
Good job.
That concludes my report. Thank you, Commissioner.
All right.
Is there ribbon cutting going to happen, or do we have to know about it or anything? We're getting pretty good at this, you know.
We'll, we'll make sure that you get to cut the ribbon, I think.
He only does the ones that have cookies or.
Yeah.
Cupcakes or whatever, right?